Roll call.
Uh, council member Holland. It's member DeGolia.
Yes.
Council member Woodburn.
Doctor Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Hawkins.
Here.
Just for the record, there's no members of the finance made of present yet.
Okay, so do we just move on then? Okay, item number one, general fund operations budget report by Robert Baron, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor, um, council and members of the public. Uh, before you today is our two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five general fund operations budget. Um, this is our general fund operations is the main uh, fund of the town of Atherton.
I'm sorry, can you speak in?
Oh, yeah.
Mike a little bit.
Correct.
It's hard to hear.
Sorry about that.
Very soft spoken.
There you go.
Thank you.
Try to keep it right here. So, uh, before you is is the twenty-four, twenty-five total general fund budget, uh, main operating fund of the town of Atherton. So, um, within the staff report, I'm going to go over some highlights. Uh, the general fund revenues are projected at twenty-three million against twenty point seven million in expenditures. Uh, within the budget, there is approximately it's five hundred thirty-five thousand more than the uh, twenty-three, twenty-four adjusted budget bulk of the increases within the administration. Building in their department, public works and police departments. The um, couple of highlights is uh, continued the major revenue sources uh, for the town are the property taxes, sales tax. Charges for services which include building, planning and public works, uh, followed by franchise fees and um, uh, other taxes, uh, parking miscellaneous revenue. In the uh, staff report, they were reporting in this uh, general fund budget, two point two one million revenue surplus, uh, single year surplus. Uh, with additional one-time revenue transfers that includes of E-RAF and CIP. Uh, there's a projected year in balance of sixteen point zero one million. Again, our property taxes are comprise about seventy percent of our revenues. Uh, the uh, we're estimating fifteen point eight million in property tax revenue for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Excess E-RAF, we're budgeting at two point five million. Uh, for uh, this coming fiscal year. Uh, within the uh, staff report, there's just a highlight of the different revenues. Again, we anticipate the building uh, community development departments to have an increase of nine hundred nine ninety thousand. And a lot of that is due to the increase in the permit fees that we adopted uh, last month. Uh, again, within your uh, staff report, there's uh, um, some minor adjustments within the department's total five hundred thirty-four thousand. Um, can go through. Other than some highlights, the increases include uh, the housing element. Uh, remaining updates, we continue to have savings due to OPEB retiree health. Grounds and maintenance facility costs have have some site increases. There's a major component of uh, police communication radios that we have budgeted within the staff. Uh, within this fiscal year, uh, listed in the staff report, our one-time purchases. Um, and again, council priorities within the community and other contract services. Uh, there's a two point four percent placeholder for salary and benefit adjustments within the staff report. Uh, for this coming fiscal year. We continue to realize savings in um, OPEB. Um, savings for the um, OPEB retiree help that is now paid by Fars Trust. Uh, one other highlight, uh, which is about four hundred and fifty thousand. One other highlight is we're continuing to realize savings, um, the cost sharing for CalPERS ER employer component. Um, of seven hundred forty-three thousand since fiscal year nineteen twenty. Um.
Yeah. Actually, our liability well, other than this. You did five million dollars. Now, if if going up, I know it's not our fault.
Mm-hmm.
I know we don't control it, but it just is unbelievable.
Correct, uh, uh, well, unfortunately, when we commit, when we made the five million contribution at that time. In uh, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, we made that in April twenty-two thousand twenty-two. We didn't make a five million uh, contribution. That fiscal year, there was a negative six point um, eight percent uh, in the investment return. That was the first negative investment return in the last twenty-plus years in CalPERS, so. Bad timing for us, but. The following year in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a six point one percent um, uh, investment return, so it. Almost a wash. But in sense of, uh, we did realize some savings in in still making that component, that 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 uh, payment. Yeah.
That's all. We're not, you're not doing it, I understand, we all understand.
Yeah.
So let's not do that again. So let's not do that again.
Uh, let's try and.
Let's try not to do that again.
Correct.
I think we've made some uh, cost sharing agreements, um, that should in the long term start to probably pay off for us.
Well, that's what they said.
Well, it. I believe it.
I, I.
You're you're doubting.
Not in Missouri, but.
Show me.
Show me money. Um, correct. So we're we're continuing to monitor that and and, um, but I, we did realize savings um, for the years upcoming, but yeah, yes. Um, you know, with the changing in the in investments in CalPERS, we'll continue to watch that and review to see about future. Uh, payments towards the fund. Uh, one highlight to mention on the workers' compensation, there in the staff report, workers' compensation, we have a replenishment amount of two hundred sixty-three thousand. Staff recommends that comes out of the workers' compensation fund. Um, the last year, we changed the allocations from seven uh, for the workers' compensation fund to one percent. Uh, of salary costs for departments and we continue to maintain that for twenty-four, twenty-five. So we estimated about savings of two hundred and forty-five thousand in doing that. However, we'll continue to monitor that, um. You know, the reduction was done because there's workers' compensation fund has enough um, reserves for future allocations. But um, as we continue to um, review going forward in in every budget, we'll we'll see if we need to update that change. Um, the staff report lists some reasons why the workers' compensation is higher. During compared to last year. Um. Of the five hundred and thirty-four thousand increase in the different departments, just want to completely kind of. Do some highlights, planning department had a savings of two hundred and forty-seven thousand. And that de- not a savings, but a decrease related to um, to um, current fiscal year. And that is due to the general plan housing element, um, related to projects that were currently taking place in the current fiscal year. That we anticipate in twenty-four, twenty-five to continue to wind down. Um, so there's a, there's a savings.
Robert, isn't that just kind of a function of it having skyrocketed last year and so now it's coming back down? I mean.
Correct.
What's what's kind of our projected? Future baseline in a normal environment?
Um, the the projected would probably be close to around nine hundred thousand and majority of that is due just to the planning department um, operations. Uh, currently right now, we're because as you mentioned, we're, we have these one-time general plan updates. Uh, those are just what order making the budget higher um, in the last two current fiscal years.
Seven, that's around the nine hundred thousand, yeah.
So it should be around that amount going forward. And then every time we have an update to the general plan, which will be sporadic um, after this year, hopefully. Um, and tho- those, you know, safety element, housing element, circulation element, full general plan updates.
Those will be done as special projects, so you'll see those independent of the base planning budget.
Which is not how we've done it before.
No, it's it's kind of been included and wrapped in there and then it just kind of does this number, but we're trying to keep those separate so we can identify them. And one of the reasons is there's there's state mandates.
Mm-hmm.
So it's important to be able to look at your assemblyman or senator and say, look, you're costing us a million dollars in our housing element this year for a town like us, that's a lot.
It is, it's huge, so another. I don't hate to. So if um, housing like planning revenue goes down because people stop. Submitting plans, you know, which we're kind of seeing a slowdown now going forward and uh, salaries keep on going up because everybody gets like. Raises every year and stuff and other expenses keep going up. I mean, at some point, do you forecast um, a crossover that will see more negativity there?
Actually, the the benefit of a contract planning services is if planning.
Oh, that's right.
Contracts or permits go down, the cost of service goes down because the hours will be reduced.
Just know that that's what we're experiencing in the business world. Because everybody wants pay raises and, you know, fees don't go up automatically. We're going to the last page now.
Although I have a question about that.
You're happy.
The the staff report said that um, building permit revenues increased slightly. Due to the fee adjustment. But when I looked at. The sources, it looked like building revenue projected budget was up twenty-five percent. Which is about what I would expect from the fee adjustment. And. So that seemed like more than a slight increase. Am I missing something?
Well, we're estimating about one point seven this fiscal year and next year, two point two million, so um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a twenty-five percent increase.
There's a slight increase and 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 some of that is. There's two components of the building revenue. One is the flat fees, the other component is the valuation fees.
Yeah.
And so I've met with um, our building official, uh, Mr. Greenlee. And we kind of tried to estimate, you know, the number of homes um, increases, uh, new homes. Um, compared to looking at last year's history and this year's. And so we kind of tried to take an average. Um, the the difficulty with that is the square coming up with. What we anticipate in square footage, if we're going to have eighteen new home constructions. You know, we can have anywhere between five thousand square feet to twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet. So how do we um? Kind of project the amount of homes based on square footage, so we we went through that that exercise and so. Um, we kind of did it average, um, and and some of these and then based on the component of the uh, planning and plan check fees off of that. So we came up with this two point two, three million. We anticipate, um, we currently have eighteen homes this year and we anticipate around that same amount for next year. New home construction, uh, that could change. Uh, we're getting to that point where, you know, the summer months and and we're trying to see, you know, economically. How things could change. And so we we think that that can be higher, but based off of our projections and. Big component is the valuations on the building fees. Um, so that's why. Uh, other than that, I just, the within your staff report, there's just the major fiscal changes within the staff report of the different departments. Um, the building, the public officials, uh, public works department has a net uh, increase of two, two thousand. A lot of, a big portion of that is because this year we did a hundred and two, hundred and eighty-two thousand for the sidewalk repairs. That we anticipate not doing next year. Um, and and in the future years, we anticipate that coming out of the CIP budget under our ADA programs. Um, there is a uh, uh, personnel-related management analyst that is added in that. But the net um, is about two, is a two thousand increase in the budget. Because of the savings in the cipher group pair program that is a one-time.
It's just that I see in every paragraph and every section sector that we say overall, the salaries and benefits category increased by. You know, a hundred thousand plus in every kind of like public works increased over a hundred thirty-seven thousand. Police department increased over seven hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and it just, you know, how how do we make that up?
There's a, there's a lot of that's related to the UAL.
UAL.
Uh, the unfronted actuarial liability payments, but the only significant. Uh, salary change is the placeholder for the two point four percent CPI in terms of salaries. And then there is the additional body that's being recommended within the public works department.
Right, right.
Those are the only major.
Yeah.
Correct. Benefit salary changes.
More staff in the two point.
Yeah.
As long as we can keep raising our fees at least three percent every year.
Right.
Might be able to.
Consistent with the CPI, those.
Make the boat float.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um.
But before you go into the fiscal outlook spreadsheet, you may also want to ask if there's any public comment opportunities as well.
Do we have any public comment?
Yeah, I'm going to put comments.
Pardon me? Do any in the room?
Yes.
Any public comment?
Well, it's not.
We're not at his uh, item yet.
Okay.
We're at his.
We're at his item, he's just.
This is, this is, this is the joint meeting.
He's not on the finance committee.
Oh, he's not?
No.
He's always on the finance committee.
Emeritus.
He thinks he's on the finance committee, but he's really not. He's on the.
I thought he's permanently on the finance.
There's a permanent.
An ad hoc.
Yes.
Who made that ad hoc committee, Mayor? I think the mayor had to make it, right?
That wasn't me, sorry.
I think Bob's position is permanent.
I don't think we got noticed.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Other than that, I mean, the general fund operations expend budget is is presented to you. Um, we 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 see a positive um, revenue. Of point of two point two million before we add in the E-RAF and RCOP. So we have a transfer, uh, total net. Uh, increase to the general reserve is three point eight million with the ending fund balance of sixteen million. Uh, of that, um, with our reserve requirement of three point one million. About six point two million of a reserve requirement. Um, once that is uh, set aside of the sixteen point million, we have nine point seven million of unallocated available fund balance.
Goodness, Mayor, I have another question if possible. Um, talking about the E-RAF and the VLF. Because we know that the um, VLF has been reduced pretty significantly, I think. Uh, counting last year and this year, it added up to what, um, seven hundred and four thousand? No, no, one point one million.
One point one million, correct.
Yeah, it was seven hundred and four for one year and four hundred and something, yeah. So one point four, one point three, one point one hundred and thirty million. And um, so what? I thought I heard you at one time say the state may claw that back or uh. Refill that loss by taking our E-RAF away or an amount from E-RAF away, is that true?
They may. Not claw back, well, repay it hopefully in the future. Um, we anticipate to get uh, one point four million. So because there is the shortfall. Um, and and discussions with the HDO. So we're estimated because we're supposed to receive this uh, probably one point six million in the twenty-three, twenty-four minute uh, fiscal year.
From VLF.
From VLF.
Right.
We're supposed to receive.
One million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Right?
That was in twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay.
That we, there's a shortfall of four hundred and twenty-five thousand and then twenty-three, twenty-four. We're supposed to receive one point six five million and we only received seven hundred and fourth thou- um, nine hundred and forty-six thousand.
I don't see the one point six.
And then um, so we had a, we received nine hundred and forty-six thousand for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Which should be one point six five million. Um, so there's a shortfall of seven hundred and four thousand, total one point one million. So next fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, in reviewing with HDO. In a perfect uh, revenue stream, that one point six five million. Should be about one point seven million in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. But because we don't know, because of the shortfalls, we're budgeting one point four million. Uh, in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year.
VLF.
For VLF. So that one point four million, nine hundred, close to a million is what we anticipate to receive for twenty-four, twenty-five. The additional amount is is the, hopefully, the potential repay back of the twenty-three, twenty-four um, VLF.
But what what you're talking about.
Not adding up to a total amount.
No, and and what you're talking, actually talking about is the state's looking at E-RAF.
Yeah.
To backfill their shortfall on VLF.
Yeah, so.
So essentially.
Either way, we're going to lose.
They're paying us back with our own money.
Right.
Right.
And we'll lose it on the E-RAF side if the state works it that way.
Right.
We're just not sure if that's going to.
Yeah.
So I think budgeting the two point. Three for the E-RAF.
E-RAF.
Yeah, going forward is a little aggressive. Even though we got two points five or six.
It's below the line, so we don't really count on it as operational revenue.
Right.
Uh, and so when you're looking at this fiscal outlook spreadsheet and considering whether or not E-RAF can be something you want to spend. That's certainly something to take into account. And it might be high.
I just think. We have to be really clear about the fact that, you know, we may be looking at.
Do they have a deadline by when they are supposed to get back to us with some of this?
Um.
Why is this unknown?
Big budget.
Yeah, it has to be put into state budget.
But do they have a deadline by which they normally give us this information?
May, June, July.
The final.
August.
Anytime in that window.
I mean, I think.
Have a public comment?
What actions would be taken?
Oh.
Can you go to a mic by chance? There's one right there.
Yeah.
You can sit right there, like.
So what legal action has to be taken for them to rob E-RAF to pay Peter?
Legal action?
It's a budgetary.
Yeah. It's just a budget, they just have to budget it.
Yeah.
Right.
It, there ought to be a law. I mean, you know, start a movement.
I mean, it is our money, it is law, but they're they're.
There ought to be a law.
Using other pots of funds to pay for it. So so we're. For twenty-three, twenty-four, we're, there's a hundred and fourteen million shortfall. So we're only seven hundred and four thousand of it. San Mateo County is short seventy million of that hundred and fourteen total countywide. San Mateo is seventy million of that shortfall. So in relation.
They're big.
Their their almost sixty percent of that hundred and fourteen million shortfall is due is is due to San Mateo. Um, so it's a big deal and and a lot of agencies have been um. They're they're sending letters and and we've had in the past and currently we will send letters from from our mayors. To to the legislator, letting them know that it's an important funding for our cities. Um, so yes, for us, seven hundred thousand is a lot.
Yeah.
Of the hundred and fourteen million shortfall, we're only seven hundred and four thousand of it.
Well, I don't like to use that ratio just because.
No, no, but it for for us, it's it means a lot. And 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 so that's, it is a lot. It is a lot, but when you think about other agencies, that and and that's why I think. Um, it always needs to get budgeted, but I, when there's multiple agencies saying that this is, this is very vital. Um, eventually the state will have to have a fix for it. Um, this just recently started like two years ago where there was the shortfalls. Um, prior to that, there was, there was no VLF shortfalls, there was maybe one or two years sporadically that there was a shortfall, but it would be repaid in the next budget. So this is something that is becoming as a habitual. So um. We we feel that at least they'll start paying back those shortfalls budget time, budget, well, in in the budget. But as and it's basically going to always be a year's away, I think.
So just one more thing, just to clarify a little bit more about VLF, uh, what it stands for, what's the acronym? And I think it will continue to reduce over time. I don't think it's ever going to kind of pop back up to uh, be a really robust number.
Why do you think that?
Because of the green cars and not as much gas being purchased.
Correct, but for the state, it's what it'll hurt the state. So basically what this is property tax in lieu of VLF. In two thousand and four, this was, this was voted on and 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 was put into um, California constitution.
Just for point of clarity, though, VLF is your vehicle license fee, not your gas tax.
Yeah.
So it's your registration.
Yeah.
Okay, not the gas tax.
Right.
Okay, I know, okay, but are people getting rid of their cars and using bicycles more?
No. They could.
Well, good for you.
Yeah.
Isn't it just the state playing with money? I mean, they they can move, they need money for something else, so they're taking it from this and that's where it changes various jurisdictions, including ours.
It hits, it hits. It hits us more than other, not us as an Atherton, but San Mateo County, Marin County and other jurisdictions with E-RAF. Because the state's mandatory Prop ninety-eight funding for schools is what they're trying to shore up. So they're using the VLF money and E-RAF money to do that.
Okay.
And so the VLF and the E-RAF are what comes to local jurisdictions, E-RAF on the back end, if we have affluent jurisdictions. And so, yeah, they're just moving all that around and we end up the short end of that stick.
Okay. We started reducing, it's a, we started helping private schools and that's why it now went down. But ours didn't go down much as others because we don't have that many private schools here as in the other areas.
That's the only thing we have are private schools.
We do have private schools, but not as many as say Redwood City does.
We're not as big as Redwood City.
So, um, anyway. I believe that Robert and George have conservatively. Put in the revenue and have aggressively put in the expenses as always. And so I think the number we should just leave it in as is and hope because there's going to be swings and roundabouts anyway.
Swings and roundabouts?
Budget that you put together, it's pretty good, there are some things that could be challenged in my mind. Uh, that that don't correlate with wording in the narrative about our position and the aggressiveness of the fences.
Every year, that's what happens every year.
I'm hoping.
Not a bad thing.
It's not a good thing, you want to be as close to, you want to be as close to accurate as you can rather than sandbag it. So you can see what you really have and then you can make your judgments when we come to. Uh, capital projects.
Right.
And if you don't estimate more realistically than you under. Invest when you do capital project. We've always underestimated E-RAF and we've had a number of discussions about that. And the two point five million is a step up as was last year's, I think it was two point three, was it?
Two point three.
Was a step up from what we had done before and I think that was a good move. And if it proves that we end up with less than two point five, we'll reduce it next year.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
When we get to the CIP, we'll talk more.
Yeah, that's where it has an impact.
Yeah. Uh, we need more for potholes.
Yes.
Well, I mean, so are we turning to the financial planning?
We we can look at the financial planning model, but it's it, since the CIP isn't this meeting, it's a meeting coming up where we'll really get into the detail. It's more of a familiarization.
This is more related to CIP.
Yes. Yeah. Because it's taking that nine point seven million dollars and allocating it out into your buckets to identify where your priorities are for the CIP. What's on the spreadsheet now is what you ended up with last year and it does project out a few years. And uh, the the new bit on the bottom, uh, that was the handout that Robert produced today includes the notes. From that last meeting where we identified some specific projects and some TBD projects.
But these aren't in order of the numbers, right?
They reflect below the numbers.
The the fiscal years.
The fiscal years.
The fiscal years.
No, in.
They're in the columns.
But each, I like, okay, well.
But they, they're not.
Get into it.
They're, they're not weighted.
No, no, it's not weighting, but the first one is, the first one is.
Construction of Selby.
Yeah, it, I mean, I don't know, it depends what year you want to go to, but.
It's twenty-three, twenty-four.
In twenty-three, twenty-four, that's our current year.
Yeah.
Uh, the first one is PED at Stockbridge ADLP.
Oh.
And is that the one point two five million?
That is the uh, SU grant project, I assume.
No, I understand that, but where's the number that relates to that?
It would be.
Robert will be able to.
Aside buckets.
Robert can explain some.
I can answer.
No, my, 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 my only comment is we have a list of projects.
Yes.
That have been added.
Mm-hmm.
And my, but my thinking is those projects aren't in order of the numbers. It, it's like the first one doesn't relate to.
Right.
One point two five, the Atherton Channel doesn't relate to two point eight, two five, that, you, you don't know where those go.
Well, they're in the different cat, I'll call them in the bucket category, so they may not be ordered in.
In.
In that stretch, but I can tell you that the, um, Bike and Ped Master Plan, for example, includes the money for the PED at Stockbridge ADLP.
Okay.
And then also for, um, let's see here, so Stockbridge, it should have a bike lane project in there as well.
Selby Lane Bike Lane.
The Selby Lane Bike Lane, for example.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, yeah, so construction of Selby Lane Bike Lanes, which is right under the ADLP slash Las Luminas. Is, is part of the bike ped funding.
Okay, so at some point, we just need to know what goes where.
Yeah.
This will be more.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go, we'll flush that out next time when we start going over the CIP.
Right, right.
Okay, I'm gonna put this aside then.
So we have an operational reserve and we have that set thirty percent inch so that it can cover all the costs in case we don't have the money.
Correct.
Yeah.
And on top of that, we have another five percent there that's a minimum, uh, unallocated fund balance for the same thing.
No, wait, it's fifteen percent. You mean the emergency reserve? We have an emergency reserve and a budget stability.
They're each fifteen percent.
They're each fifteen, but they used to be twenty.
Correct.
And so you reduced one of them down to fifteen and stuck that five percent down here because we were getting concerned that if that number goes negative, then our, our checking account goes negative. So we had a recommended unallocated fund balance of five percent along that bottom, that table.
That's above reserve department, the nine, nine thou, nine million.
There is no twenty percent any longer. We, you reduce that to fifteen. You have an operational reserve of fifteen percent and an emergency reserve fifteen percent.
Fifteen and fifteen, but we did another five percent.
Where?
Down here.
Oh.
The operational reserve is if, for example, property tax payments are being made, the town has an emergency of some kind and we need to pay salaries and benefits and do projects. No, so we had two reserves. We had a twenty percent reserve and a fifteen percent reserve. And then we ran this table and staff was saying we need to keep a, a number in our unallocated balance as well. And so we were identifying a number down there. When the council looked at that a little closely, we said, okay, well, how about we just reduce that twenty percent reserve down to fifteen percent? Make them both fifteen percent and to satisfy staff's concern about having a minimum balance in our checking account.
Yeah.
That's the five percent down along the bottom.
Yeah, that's, wait, show me where it is. Oh, minimum, okay, number, item number forty-one.
Yes, line number forty-one.
Number forty-one. That's what we're looking at. Can you see number forty-one? And it's only a million dollars.
Those are the fifteen percent.
It's five percent, but it's only a million.
Only anything, it's five percent.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's.
Okay, for twenty-five.
Full million dollars.
It's a.
It's five per, five percent of our operational.
It's a million dollars, a million thirty-nine thousand.
Thirty-two.
Well, no, that was back in twenty-twenty-one.
True.
And so I'm going to.
Oh, I see. You're, you're on twenty-four, twenty-five. You're right.
Yeah.
That's not.
Said I was right. Aren't you nice?
I like that.
So it's, it's not a fund.
That too.
They're, they're all part of the general fund balance. That we have two reserve accounts, so to speak, sub-accounts.
Yeah.
We all together.
And I remember last year, staff raised the concern about not going below zero. So that's just a target number that you look at down there.
It is, but this is truly, this is truly your, your checking account.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but we're on different charts. So two things that I would like that would be better for some of us, like myself, math challenged. If we had shared the screen, so when we're on a, a thing that's on the screen, so we're all seeing the same thing. Cause I'm looking around and people are holding different sheets and trying to find out where item fifty-four is. And so if we could share a screen, somebody.
These are exactly the same.
Line forty-one.
Which is at the very bottom, line forty.
The line numbers are all the way on the left.
Line item number forty-one says REC hyphen D, minimum unallocated fund balance, five percent. That's what they're arguing about.
Okay.
Cause that's where they took that five percent off of the twenty percent.
Got it.
Which I thought the twenty percent was wrong. You never know how expensive it's gonna be and if we don't have any money.
And so, and so in order for me on a day in, day out basis, to use the fifteen percent emergency or fifteen percent operational, I have to have the city council vote on my expenditure. So I, I can't spend that money otherwise. If I do, I've, you know, violate.
That was that way when it was fifteen and twenty.
Exactly.
Now it's fifteen and fifteen and you can go into the five.
Yes, exactly.
A little slush fun there, don't you?
No. It's, it's a cushion within the general fund.
So why, why are we still growing the emergency and the operational?
Those are based on our annual budget amount, so they don't grow, they're just set aside as that amount.
No, it, it grows. It's just set at fifteen percent.
We don't add to it every year. It's a, it's a percentage each year. Yeah, right.
Well, security blanket if we go to hell in a handbasket financially. The CIP.
Next month.
We're just so eager.
Okay.
So eager.
Do, Robert, do you have any more that you're presenting to us today?
No.
All right. Yeah, no, other than just wanted to kinda go over the general fund, um, budget and just kind of go over a high level with, um, all the departments within the, uh, you have it all within the staff report. And then mainly the outlook tool, just to let you know that, um, it's been updated, uh, with our current whatevers in the general fund revenue expenditure summary for the, um, current budget twenty-four, twenty-five. The outlook mirrors this, your attachments for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But, uh, as George mentioned, the, um, unallocated nine point seven million that we have in, that we're showing is not allocated in this outlook tool. Uh, it's, it's, it's allocated in this outlook tool, but it's not currently allocated out of our general fund budget until we go through this exercise, um, during the CIP, um, budget meetings. Again, five point eight million was allocated in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget currently.
So what page are you on?
Uh, I'm just kinda going over the, uh, outlook tool.
Attachment.
The attachment, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But if you're, just to kind of, you know, walk us through the outlook pool, you're gonna start with general fund one oh one attachment, which is page nineteen of ninety-eight in our packet.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So if you go to the packet, that's what he's gonna try to go down.
Like the first page of the.
Yeah, uh, first page of attachment one.
And there's no way to share this on the screen, so we're all seeing the same thing.
Well, it would be really hard.
Through it all, we could.
But, but, I think all Robert's trying to do is just summarize what happened last year.
Right.
Uh, and then.
Yeah, so.
Setting the stage for the conversation around that eight point nine million dollars that the financial fiscal outlook tool says.
Yeah.
That we're gonna allocate in twenty-four, twenty-five, but you've only got nine point seven million dollars in your unallocated general fund balance. So if you allocated all eight point nine of it, the way the spreadsheet says, that balance is gonna drop to one point something. That's all he's trying to articulate.
Correct.
As long as it doesn't drop below one million thirty-nine thousand.
Right.
Yes, if there's, but if there's any other questions, um, regarding.
Do you have any comments or questions? Are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, there's one.
To go up to the, yes.
So I've asked this before and I still haven't found it. We have a bunch of money that's been allocated from earlier budgets that hasn't been spent. Can we get a list of that? Maybe when you do the CIP program, cause it's all CIP stuff.
Not sure it's all CIP though.
Correct.
It is all CIP. It, it, that's part of the five point nine million that's allocated into the CIP fund.
No, I understand that, but, uh, uh, isn't there sometime normal budget that we don't utilize that gets carried over also?
You see that in the unallocated general fund balance. So that, that always shows up. What you, what is a little more nebulous is when we shift it over to the CIP and we don't do a project and it carries over to the next year. That's the money that gets a little more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suspect it's big. Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that.
But, but they're programmed though. It, it's not that they haven't been, it's just haven't been spent.
It's programmed for a project. It just hasn't been spent yet.
I have a question about that though, cause it's earning interest, right? And it's a big amount of money?
Yeah.
So are we, is there like money in there that could cover an additional project? Like, do we have a surplus?
From interest?
We, we allocate, we allocate the interest, um, based off of the balance per fund.
What, what she's asking, Robert, is what, what's our interest earning rate in life?
Life, it's about four, four point five.
But doesn't the interest go to general fund? It doesn't stay within the little.
It gets allocated. It, it goes, it's, it's in the general.
If you have a million dollars for a park project and you don't spend it one year, the next year, do you, do you have a million, ten thousand? Because it's gained ten thousand interest?
Not in that fund. I mean, not in that project, but it's in the fund. It's in the.
Not in the project, but in the fund.
It's in the fund.
Yeah.
So the, the way we allocate.
That's my question though. So then there's like ten thousand bucks just sitting there not allocated, but we don't know about it because it's an allocated.
But we, but we do, it gets, it, it's still, it stays in the fund, but it gets allocated in, as a remaining balance within that fund. We allocate it out, so, because it's additional interest.
So for, for example, in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, you get a two million dollar project, you don't do it, carries over to the next year. Now it's two million, ten thousand dollars. But in that very next fiscal year, you say, how much is in our general fund budget? We have a project we need to do that's five hundred thousand dollars. Oh, wait a minute, there's ten thousand already in the CIP fund. We're only gonna allocate four hundred and ninety thousand from our general fund.
Correct. Yes, that we track, we, we include it, yes.
Yes. That went into the CIP last year.
Yes.
CIP, general fund out.
Yes.
There.
So the five point eight, nine million was allocated to the.
In that line.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, twenty-two, okay, five, five point eight million.
Yeah.
I'm looking ahead to twenty-four because.
Because we haven't gotten there yet.
Yes.
Right.
Next June.
June. Okay.
Correct.
We'll, we'll break that down a little more detail when we go into the CIP.
Yeah.
For each file.
But, but I think Bob's request to have a list of what are the CIP allocations is, is a really good request.
Yeah.
Yeah, the programs.
We'll do that.
Yeah, shall we move on to item number two with this police department annual report, annual automated license plate reader, audit report and annual ALPR system performance review report? And we have, uh, our chief police official, Stephen McCullough.
Mayor, thank you, council. Oh. I'm sorry, I was late to the meeting. I had a question about one of the operations expenses that was in the staff report. It is a PD question, so it's a good transitional topic, but, uh, what, we are allocating money towards buying new gas powered SUVs. And I'm wondering, what is that process? Like, we'll allocate the money to it, but are you gonna come back to council for approval or am I, is this approving it right now?
Two, two years ago, that when we brought vehicles to the council, the council said, we don't need vehicles as long as you're doing it pursuant to policy. So now we do it pursuant to policy. We note them. They come out of the equipment placement fund as part of the budget, so you see it in that context. We are buying and we did buy, actually, in the last budget cycle, there was an allocation for four vehicles. They were all gonna be the Tahoe replacements of the old twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen interceptors and other Ford vehicles. Ford Explorers. Uh, but you, car folks couldn't get them to us in a timely manner. They take about a year anyway. So they only ended up with two Tahos and then replaced the two unmarked Ford Torres's with EVs. So two full EVs. The pursuit rated police vehicles are not quite there yet. Yes.
They're aspirational.
Those are the gas customers.
Aspirational.
I, I did like a five minute Google search and I found more than ten towns in California that are electrifying their fleet. And I also know that our climate action plan.
Their police fleet?
Yes, and pursuit, specific.
There, there are some Teslas out there that qualify.
Ford F-150s, Ford Monkees, there's a bunch of them that are now pursuit rated. So like South Pasadena has electrified their entire fleet. So I'm just curious, before we just like approve gas powered fleet, um, and then also our climate action plan said that starting in twenty twenty-four, fifty percent of our vehicle purchases would be clean air vehicles in compliance with the, um, carb ruling. So I'm flagging it to understand what, I know we don't have chargers in the garage, which I'm assuming is a big hurdle for that. So I'm wondering, before we green light these gas cars, what's the plan?
And the issue isn't so much that we have chargers. Menlo Park next door has, I believe, two Teslas and speaking of they're cheap, they're having some issues with them. Uh, the way our fleet is utilized, um, we would have to have additional vehicles for charging because the, the technology is there for rapid charging. Also too, for emergency response and, and long-term on scene, the technology just isn't really there for readiness component.
But we'll get there. And we're slowly, the unmarked ones are the chief's vehicle, the commander's vehicle, the detective's vehicle. Those are easy hurdles, uh, because they're not the ones that are your.
We had the level of service required with those vehicles, but we have two current hybrid Camrys for the detective sergeant, the detective. The commander and myself will have full, uh, EV, so we'll have, uh, four.
Yeah, so I, I think the issue, I, I, we've made a decision to go to EVs for the vehicles that aren't pursuit related, which is great, and that's behind us and I, I think everyone supports that. The question is exactly what is the state of technology? And it sounds like there's some question, if there's some agencies that in fact are using electric vehicles as pursuit vehicles. I think we should authorize a study to do that level of review.
We can do that.
Yeah, and, and in, 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 in requesting that, I, I want to be clear. At least I am not saying we absolutely should do this, but I wanna get the facts and do an analysis about, you know, some, some agencies seem to think that it works. So let's look at it and see if we can agree with them or if we can't agree with them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, just, don't get me wrong, I fully support that, but my responsibility is to make sure that our fleet for our residents, that we have the readiness available. And I just don't think we're there yet. But we are doing our part on the other end.
And then the other side of it, and we'll probably talk about it in CIP, but you guys need chargers in your garages, right? So.
No.
No?
No, I, I live half a mile away, so they have a three hundred mile range. The commander lives close, so we, we plan to utilize. I guess I could walk to where George keeps reminding me. Um, we plan to use chargers that are here.
You have to escape really quickly and you can't, you know, run back home.
Too old to run.
Well, if we're gonna, if we end up buying more electric vehicles for the police department, we should put chargers in the parking lot.
Yes, we will need them at that time, but right now we plan on utilizing the chargers that are on site, which is more than capable.
You just need the time to charge.
I mean, just the carb ruling says in twenty twenty-seven, all of our car vehicle, our car.
There's an exception for emergency.
And we don't own many other public works vehicles. I mean, Robert's staff and code, and, um, so Will, you and Sally.
Sally.
Well, I share mine with Will now.
With Will, yeah.
And so Tim's got the truck, Sally has the truck.
Right, and we're working on transitioning those, but those are the only ones we own. MCE, they're not, we don't own those.
I know there's rules on TV cars being cycled. I know there's rules around TV cars being cycled.
You know, leaf blowers and uh, electric lawnmowers and edgers and stuff like that, bringing them to electric. The law says depending on technology. And so that's where I think, you know. Question. Maybe we have the response angles that we have, we need to have. Either the Berkeley Times and things like that. You know, we need to. Based on technology, we'll do what we can. All those goals.
And we'll learn from these other agencies that are. That's what's nice. If they have the capability to do that, then we can definitely learn from their success or their challenges.
Yes, we have Menlo Park, Irvine, South Pasadena, Fremont, St. Helena, Cotati, Oakdale, Fort Bragg, Folsom, Reading, Seaside, all have electric pursuit. I hear you that our fleet's smaller, so like a fraction of their fleet, but it seems like they're out in the world. So I want to make sure we're keeping an eye.
Now I'm ready.
You're ready.
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. Thanks for the time to present our annual report. Uh, I'm very pleased and proud of uh, what we accomplished in twenty twenty three. It was another great year for the police department, actually part of our centennial too. So a hundred years of service to our residents, high level of service, by the way. Uh, I plan to make some general kind of high level comments and I kind of look to you for what piques your interest and what your questions are. And then I'll ball that up with our ALPR analysis report and our audit, which will be quick. Uh, so just real quickly, our staffing still remains at uh, we're at we were at full staffing till a couple of weeks ago when one of our officers resigned to go to Palo Alto. We are recruiting heavily for that. We have about five or six applicants already. So I'm confident, as we have in the past, that that won't remain vacant for long. And then our new code enforcement officer, our additional one, thank you for her. She'll come on board uh, in May.
There's no lobster dinner for that.
No, you did mention something about that. Oh, that's side.
On Dundee.
Side study. So uh, we also recently filled our open canine position. So we have our second canine out on patrol. And again, thank you to Ann Ramsey for providing not only the dog with a car and she's very generous uh, to us. We continue at every opportunity, speaking of electric cars too, we we are attempting to leverage technology at every point that we can. Uh, our drone included, our bandicam body cameras, our new drones. Greatly supported by the council and also very generously supported by our residents. Uh, the donations that we do have, we do put to very good use. Alarms are still an issue uh, in town, false alarms. We continue to educate. Uh, we continue to track. We continue to uh, impose fines. Uh, and we have a permanent process at work with finance on sending out so we get more information. Uh, still kind of, you know, it is, it does take a lot of time. It is very important that we do respond. There are some agencies that don't respond uh, to alarms. We definitely do. So we'll continue to work on that. Mr. Widmer mentioned our response times. Our response times uh, continue to be extremely good. If you need a police officer in this town, you're going to have two, at least two within three minutes. That's our normal response time for I gotta get there now emergency. If you kind of need us, it's important. Uh, we'll be there within six minutes and we're under that. And in general, it's under uh, eight. Across the country, and I know it's a little bit different, large metropolitan areas, unfortunately, if you need a police officer now, it can be ten or fifteen minutes and those are vital minutes. Our collision picture uh, still remains low. I know that there are some concerns about different intersections in different areas, but if you if you keep in mind the number of miles that are driven in town, cut through traffic, ECR, Alameda and Middlefield, you know, our collision picture is low. We're very fortunate. The vast majority of those collisions are non-injury or very minor injury uh, and no fatalities.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
The photos in in our handout here.
Those are not in town.
Yeah, I I noticed that too.
Illustrated purposes only. And we're fortunate that we don't have to take those type of pictures. On our crime dashboard, again, you know, burglary is obviously topic of the day. Um, I I do appreciate council attending our community meeting. I think it was well received. Uh, that's the message that we've been driving home for, as you're aware, for several years with outreach, uh, community meetings, uh, et cetera. And and the true solution is, and it's not a blame game, but I get more direct uh, as time goes on, that the residents are the key to this teamwork to really. It is a preventable crime, uh, and it is something that we'll continue to work on.
But Chief, I could just interject real quick, and I know you addressed it in the in the meeting with the city and the residents, but high priority on the IP access for the for the uh, alarms. Most people have that and until you get that, they're saying they can't get connected to the PD. They have to go through a third party service.
They can get connected with a cellular solution and we have that available. Um, the IP transceiver we have. Um, unfortunately, there's been some technology challenges. This report I got is that they're they feel that they're going to be able to overcome that hurdle, particularly with AT&amp;T, you know, posturing to drop supportive landlines. So we understand the importance. We're lucky that we have the technology and we just have to get it working.
So is there a potential timeline when I can answer people?
I would hope in the next couple of months.
Okay.
It's very unfortunately, it's a little more complicated than we anticipated.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's not. It's not an easy thing. It just, you know, that's a it's a big, it's a high topic, high priority topic. You know, a lot of people are very saying, that's the only way I can get connected.
That's a question.
Yes.
AT&amp;T is trying to disconnect landlines. Do you have any idea how much that will impact existing uh, alarm systems? Because many, many of the older ones are all through.
Well, yeah, a lot of them are still by.
Do you have an idea of how many? Like, would that reflect like a large number of our people have to change out their alarm systems?
I'm not sure about equipment. Um, there is going to be an impact. But right now there is a cellular solution. It's fairly low cost and it's fairly simple. So you can connect even if your power's out via cell to dispatch. Uh, and then the next will be the IP transceiver.
Okay.
I'm not quite there yet, but I'm getting it. In fact, I'm there. I am there. Uh, so we were talking about burglary. So of course, that's uh, that is our focus. And you know, the the residents do pay attention because when we have these meetings, information goes out. We see our suspicious activity calls going up. Uh, of course, we got our RVPs out there, forty one of them with thousands of hours patrol. Uh, and then we also seek requests for uh, crime prevention, tours of their home, tours and make sure that they're got the right things going on. Uh, in addition to burglaries, you'll see an increase in crimes of robbery, aggravated assault and simple assault. And you know, I might raise an eyebrow at that. It's not significant. Of course, it's serious. Of those twenty two cases, unfortunately, eleven were at the high school. Uh, don't get me wrong. It it is a safe campus. You're dealing with twenty seven hundred teenage kids. Don't all have the support that we had uh, growing up. So there is challenges there. School is aware of it. That's why they are funding uh, fifty percent of our school resource officer. So that shows, you know, good teamwork there and continue to work on it. They recognize and we recognize uh, down the road, we'd like to get a second school resource officer on the campus because our current SRO is he's busy, very busy. And some of these cases are serious and they are protracted. But again, I I don't want the message going on that the campus of MA is out of control and not safe. It is per se. Uh, and the simple assaults and the robbery cases, I I it's in your packet. I thought it'd be nice to do a synopsis of each one so you can see what they are. Some of the robberies, we've had people float through town, believe it or not, that just walked up to a lady walking and took the diamond necklace up her neck. Somewhat violently. Some of the others are, hey, I haven't seen you for a long time, like a pickpocket and they hug them. They've actually even replaced the jewelry that they've taken. So very sophisticated. Um, and then the aggravated assaults, some of it's on our, you know, on our police officers. Unfortunately, that's what we're, that's what we're paid to do. Uh, a lot of student activity. But again, random violent crime, you know, rape, murder uh, in town is extremely, extremely rare. And then my favorite part of of our operations, and I'm glad that we have the support and the time to do it, is the amount of outreach that we're doing. Some people might look at it and say, well, that's fluff work. It's not. Outreach, I think, is extremely important to be transparent, to be out there, to get to know our residents, to have their trust and confidence, which I feel very confident that uh, we do. So with that, I will stop. Um, I would like to say very proud to be part of the police department. Uh, next month, I'll be here seven years. It's been an outstanding seven years. This is not my announcement for retirement. Uh, and looking forward to what we're going to do uh, in the next several.
So are you going to talk about the audit next?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions about the report. Yes.
I just have I have a question or comment, a comment. Um, the mayor and I attended the public outreach when you did the burglary seminar with your investigative team, Gina and Jeff. They did great. However, I have to tell you that the acoustics in our environment here, there were many residents who couldn't adequately hear the presentation and understand what was being said because um, it was not clear enough. Um, the microphone wasn't loud enough. And I know there's one couple that was sitting in the road that I was sitting in uh, who were just, he was, he says, can you hear? Can you hear? Can you understand what's going on?
Yeah, we did up the volume a couple of times.
I I know you tried, but it was very um, frustrating to these residents who came and I many of them, you know, um, really. I don't think they got the full benefit of the whole presentation. These slides, if I can make a recommendation, um, need to be uh, very big and bold bullet points and not a whole slide that has maybe fifteen different bullet points because they could not read or see like, you know, if we had tried to put up our um, spreadsheet, our our slide and our video, our visual is not robust enough to be able to adequately see small print.
Receive some of that same feedback.
Already. Okay.
But I appreciate that because.
You're very welcome.
You were right.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
But I was on, I was at that meeting online and I didn't have a problem with the audio. So uh, I was I was surprised because we've had so many problems with the audio, but I guess the fixes it really made improvement, at least online.
I think it was presenting and a conversational thing and the audio, you know, just in the um, audience was not very clear.
Yeah, that's fine. No problem. It's just, you know, it it's it sounded fine online.
But it was it was well attended. There were a lot of very interested people there.
I thought that you should have taken comments, except you only took one comment from the uh, online. And there were several, many comments that came up during the speech. And so just like we do when we go through item by item and say, you know, are there any any comments online? And you can address those because as a person that was online, you know, I saw them going by. And so uh, not everybody can make it to the meeting and spend the time to be there with the travel and things like that, but they wanted to attend. So that was my, if I have, I thought it was a great meeting. Uh, I think, uh, you know, Gina, Gina and her boss did very, very well. And a lot of great information, but um, you know, just when you're when you got people online, you just need to address their needs as well.
And for the benefit of those in the room and those online, we do have assisted listening devices, uh, several of them back in the closet there. Jim Massey used to use one at every council meeting simply because the reverberations in the room of the audio sometimes can cause some challenges.
So, yeah, I guess we should maybe make that, yeah, and offer, right? From whoever the presenter is.
Didn't you read? You were reading questions from online.
Yeah.
Yeah, she read about four, five, six questions.
But there are a lot more.
It covered.
Um, so a lot of them were just um, repeated questions. And as the chief was presenting it, they were already being answered when it was asked. So to have to ask the same question for him to answer it again would have made everything slower.
We were just trying to keep the flow going. We also did uh, advise them to uh, email Jennifer, my assistant, and several have, and I've responded to those questions too. So. But good point. I understand.
Nice.
So on to ALPR, the analysis report. So the system continues to function extremely well. What on what I'm saying?
Oh, no, not me personally. Someone.
For me? Go ahead.
Well, if you want to go ahead and say a comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did you say me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Well, in that part of the speech, um, I have a a question about the um, using the alarm by wifi. My internet normally goes out often when we have an electrical problem. So uh, I think this, excuse me, I'm on a gym, uh, but um, I wonder about the council taking a position like I believe Woodside has uh, against this uh, AT&amp;T proposal uh, to eliminate landlines. I would appreciate it if you would. So far, it's focused a lot on people who are remote and things like that. But I think it's very important here. And although the chief says there's going to be some kind of internet connection, uh, that to me doesn't solve the problem. So anyway, I I don't know whether you've considered already, but I hope you will uh, to write to the PUC and take a position on behalf of our town. Uh, secondly, I'll remark about uh, Bill's comment about um, the sound being good on on video. Uh, it's a completely different issue. I can't hear basically in the room where you're sitting, but I can hear fine right now because obviously I'm remote. So it's a very different animal uh, that you have to consider. And so those are my my two comments about this. I will also be interested to hear how fruitful our uh, uh, cameras have been, given that here in Lloyd and Park, of course, it was successful on one occasion. We've had a number of other robberies and so on, which I don't believe it has helped. So thank you very much.
Right, back to me. So on ALPR, system's working extremely well. Uh, when they're installed, uh, two up off the wall show have fifty one cameras in town. Uh, on average each year, which is amazing to me, uh, the cameras are reading over fifty four million license plates uh, annually. Uh, I will say that since we first started several years ago, we are getting less hits or on stolen vehicles. I I don't I attribute some of that maybe to known criminals that we have this system are staying out. They're also always one step ahead of us and they're stealing license plates from parking lots and putting on cold plates. Uh, that said, uh, last year we had, I think, ten or twelve success stories and they vary from stolen cars, burglary suspects. Also in a couple of our recent burglaries where they did have cold stolen plates. The flock images of the ALPR images of the cars enabled investigators uh, to identify those cars related to suspects that are known and that are now under investigation. That's part of the task force that South San Francisco City is leading that we are part of. So the cameras continue to be a very valuable tool, uh, and they continue to be used properly, correctly, without violating any laws or privacy. Questions on the system? So then in our annual audit, which uh, you requested and we responded and as part of our annual uh, part of the annual analysis of the system. So our our it's done by an outside agency. Commander from Menlo Park recently conducted the audit for us. Uh, in the past, if you recall, we did have a lot of issues with officers not putting in the case number or incident number so they could be tracked. It wasn't for any, you know, malfeasance or misconduct. It's just that they weren't responding. Uh, but when you remind them enough, they finally comply. Uh, this time we had a few unfortunate uh, dispatchers that were not doing the same thing, not near the issue. That has been corrected with verbal counseling and training. Uh, so again, the system is running as designed. And we're using it within rules and policy in our law. So with that, let's see if you have any other questions?
I I do. So I want I thank you for this. Uh, I think I'm not aware that last year we got as detailed a report as the one that the commander provided today, but I think this is extremely helpful. And I kind of went through the uh, uh, different uh, success hits that we had over the year. I was interested to see which cameras were being utilized and whether there were any that were. that were, you know, particularly being utilized, and there were seven cameras that were hit, one camera at Alameda and Stockbridge got hit twice, and the cameras at Selby Lane and El Camino got hit six times. I thought that was pretty interesting and, and valuable information for us.
When you say got hit, by a car?
Of the, no, of the twelve identified stolen vehicles or felony and activation with the vehicle, six of them were, so half of them were the Selby Lane, El Camino camera, which I think that's important information for us. I also, you know, we have fifty-one cameras, I think that, we have, you know, twenty-one cameras that I think are town funded and thirty additional cameras that are privately funded. Of the hits that we got, all except one were on publicly funded cameras.
That's correct.
The one privately funded camera was at all Walnut and El Camino, so I also thought that was interesting information.
And, and you reminded me, we weren't sure how, we, we are fortunate that, you know, about thirty of the cameras are privately funded, we recently went back to our resident center funding because we had an opportunity to save money with a five-year lease, we weren't sure what the appetite was going to be, but the majority of them did respond, Lloyd and Park just recently is by residents contributing to continue to fund those, so they support them as well. And then you also reminded me from the behind the scenes tour that you attended, the Flock cam, or the ALPR cameras, as you, if you remember in the hit and run case, were critical to identifying and proving that that female suspect was in that car, so again, another great success.
Yeah, I, I, I think that may have been the only forensic item on this list, mo- most of them were stolen vehicles or what are identified as felony vehicle activation, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but it, it, so the question is, is there something we can do to make the cameras more effective from the forensic side? Because that's what would help with tracking down or potentially help with tracking down burglaries.
At this time, no, but I do know, and Flock, ALPR, the Flock, the manufacturer that we use is having a conference in June just to address that with technology that they have coming out. Also too, you know, I'm proud that we were one of the first, I think the first in the county to get these cameras, and you started that conversation, which is great. Now every agency, Belmont being the last that just got approved by council, has these cameras, and what's really nice about it from a police standpoint is, crime happens in South City, they can start, they start hitting those cameras like a ping pong ball, we can start moving people in to do it. I failed to mention as part of our leveraging technology is our burglary bait house program, which when we announced it, I, I didn't anticipate it, but received national and global media attention, we're still getting inquiries, we have fifty residents that keep calling, they're chomping at the bit to get this going. So the surveillance technology just arrived earlier this week, and so we'll be beginning it deployed, we have been working with George and our city attorney and hold harmless agreement and our procedures and then we're ready to move forward, and again, do another big media launch when we do that. And to me, the biggest aspect of the program is deterrence, is go somewhere else, don't come here, the likelihood of getting caught is increasing.
I liked the commander's comment in one of the articles about burglary roulette is what you're playing here in Athens.
Yeah, so I, I liked the ALPR report that you had, it'd be nice to see how many cars got picked up by each of these.
By each camera?
Yeah, I mean, you've got that data.
We can.
You throw it into a table, it would be nice to have it here just to show what they're looking for, also, you know, of course, I've said this before, I do think that there should be one on Ensonol, I realize it's a split street, we might want to ask Menlo Park to pay for half of it, but there was a robbery on Ensonol, if I remember right, in the last couple of months, and too bad we didn't have a, a, a camera there, because I've been bringing that up, that that's one of the areas that's open still, and there's a lot of traffic that, you know, going back and forth to pick up kids or possibly even steal a kid, hide, you know, kidnap a kid, you know, I think it's important that we would have one there, so I'll just rest my case out.
Support funding of that, I will be happy to do it.
Well, put it in your budget.
On record, okay.
When you, when I did the tour with the police department there, they, they gave a very interesting example of how you were able to track a person in our city who had done a crime, in that case it was a hit and run, by tracking their cellphone, pinging off the towers as they moved through the city, they were obviously on the phone, and it would switch between the cell towers, is that somehow also, are you able to triangulate that also to the reader hit off the car? Like, is that data available?
Emra?
Yeah, so you're getting data on moving cars, you have a license plate, and now you have a person on the phone, is, is there software available that allows you to do that?
Not that I'm aware, but from that example, because we have the license plate that placed her in the area, then they're able to do the geofence and cell tower hit to then confirm that she was there.
They've been doing that stuff. DEA has been using that stuff since.
You have to use a warrant to go to the cell provider.
Points of interest, I wonder if they can communicate it, so.
Yeah.
But they have to have a warrant to access.
And the behind the scenes tour, and I appreciate you all coming, and that was George's idea, which was great, and that is another example, when I spoke about the high level of performance from my team, that is a classic example of, again, we might be small, they know what they're doing, they're highly trained, they're highly educated, every piece of equipment, thanks to you guys, and so, you know, I'm just really proud of what they do.
Two comments, first, this report that you did that's in our packet is really excellent.
And that's in large part thanks to Jennifer Frew.
It, I'm sure it costs a fair amount, but it's really impressive, and our residents, I don't know what we're going to do with it, relative to the residents, I'm sure it's available at the department to them, but.
We're going to push it out, I'll push it out tomorrow with a link.
Are you going to do it online or, yeah, online, yeah.
Second comment, I appreciate the summary of the robberies, simple and aggravated assault cases, I really would like one of these for burglaries, because it's burglaries that really are the keystone for this community.
And, and we have that, and I have to provide you, because we, again, I, I never wanted to repeat that contentious meeting we were at years ago at the pavilion, and so, it's not for negative reasons, that we track every particular item in the burglary, primarily, were their lights on, do they have an alarm, was it on, what's in the master bedroom, and we use that so we can say once again, they did not follow anything we've been saying very proactively for several years, and so we have that and I can get that to you.
Yeah, that'd be good, because a lot of people ask for detail, as you know, even at that meeting, they, they complained about that, that you only give a hundred point average, you know, in the hundred block or the two hundred block, and, you know, they want to know, was it right next door to me, so the more information we can give them, the more relaxed they may be or.
And I think when a burglary occurs, we're giving enough information, that one lady in particular, unfortunately, that's just curiosity factor, there is no reason that she needs to know.
Oh, I agree.
And we're protecting the privacy of the other people, but that said, is we are, we aren't putting enough information out in our news slices each time there is a burglary, and what I really liked from this latest presentation, we didn't before and we'll do it again, is for residents to see those pictures of the glass break, to see the closet being tossed, and we had asked, we had, we had floated the idea about having burglary victims come in and speak, and I think I will do that next time, so maybe, you know, here's one of your fellow residents, don't let this happen to you, but the picture is worth a thousand words, right, and I think it's important, like, just don't let this happen and it's, it's not foolproof, but it is pretty easy to protectors.
Oh, I'll resend that, I think we sent that summary out in mid-March for the eleven burglaries that you were talking about.
I did that assessment. For the, for twenty-four.
For twenty-four, yeah.
Right, th- these are all twenty-three.
So you want twenty-three, okay.
Yes.
And I, I just also had one comment, there are fifty, fifty-one cameras, and of, of that twenty-one are town funded, so there, there will be an incident where at some point the residents will say, we're not going to continue funding of this particular camera, and so the direction of the chief has been at that point, evaluate that camera, kind of like you just did this, this evening, and whether it's of value, whether there's other cameras that cover the same entry points, and then bring a report to the council of whether or not we should fund the camera or we should remove the camera, so we'll do that at that point, but at whatever point it is in that five-year agreement, we'll continue that five-year agreement until that's up at that point.
I came up with respect to Lloyd and Park already, because they had their renewal, I, I think theirs was a two-year deal, right?
Three-year, I believe.
Maybe it was three, I don't know.
It was a bit of a challenge because the gentleman that led it last time didn't want to keep doing it, but they did corral and so that everybody contributed a different amount of money, so it's important to them, right? And so they kept them.
Oh, I think it was good, I think it was a good solution.
So do we have any public comment, I see we have some people in the room, do you want to make any public comments? Okay, anybody online?
Looks like we're done.
All right, we're done, we can move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, yeah. Peter alligator.
Bye-bye butterfly.
Doodle-doo kangaroo.